We will call this Monday, March 5th, 2018. Work session of the Somerset School Board to order at 6:01 PM. Asia, could you do roll call please?
Bruce Polargin, I'm here. Katie Thermas.
Here.
Marie Colbach. Nancy Dressel.
Here.
Courtney Kapalski. Catherine Tranchen.
Patty Shachner.
Here.
Alright, board members, there's a reminder of our protocols on our agenda. Our district mission is together we engage, educate, and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Item number three is public comment, and at this time I have not received any red cards for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to complete a card? Hearing none, we will move on to item four, which is topics for action. Item four A is to suspend Robert's rules of order. Given the inclement weather and effort that we all had to make to make it here, I'm wondering if there are any members that want to offer a motion to modify our agenda? Since we do not have an item two.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. What motion would you like to make? How would you like to modify it?
Well, for anybody that's here, let's put them at the top.
Okay. So, that would be moving item six, eight, and nine to the top?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Catherine Cranston to move items six, eight, and nine to the top of our agenda. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Catherine Cranston and seconded by Patty Shachner to modify our agenda by moving items six, eight, and nine to the top of the agenda to honor people who are here and let them leave in this inclement weather. Any questions or discussion?
Take seven off for us.
So, and Mark. Say that again.
Oh, maybe I should modify it to take seven off.
Take seven off?
Yeah.
Alright.
Thanks Bruce.
Thank you Bruce.
Is our camera on this week? Mm-hmm.
And Patty, are you willing to modify your second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Catherine Cranston and seconded by... Can we also talk about number 10? Because that, I believe, was supposed to be addressed at the...
Yeah, we're gonna talk about it. Yeah, we're gonna talk about it, it's just not being moved to the top.
Okay, it was supposed to be addressed at the employee council today, which was canceled. So, I didn't know if we might want to postpone that as well.
Oh. Just, I'm not gonna give a twenty minute update. I'll just give you where we're at right now, but I'm not gonna get into the details of it, you know, because there's... Let me tell you what's throughout, okay?
Okay. Alright, so, I asked board members if they wanted to make a motion to modify our agenda. We have a motion made by Catherine Cranston and seconded by Patty Shachner to move item six, eight, and nine to the top of the agenda, remove item seven, and we will also be shortening item 10. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And the motion passes unanimously, right to zero. The next item on our agenda is to suspend Robert's rules of order. Is anyone willing to make that motion? So, thank you Patty. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Katie. So, we have a motion made by Patty Shachner and seconded by Katie Thermas to suspend Robert's rules of order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, right to zero. So, we will then move to item six, which is Trish with the CISA XI shared contract.
Thank you. Thank you for moving us up too, I really appreciate that. If you click into the shared contract, you have that, great. This is just, just take a couple minutes, we just wanted to do a quick overview. Each year, we are presented with a contract of options for shared services for CISA XI, our local consortium, and we value many of these services. It gives us great opportunity to network, get the direct line item feed, what's the latest and greatest from DPI, as well as support professional development. We also have assistance with some of our state and federal grants. So, just to give you a little look at this year's contract, each year we go through and we analyze our usage of each of the individual line items. We've made some big changes from year to year. This year, we do not have a very big swing in our changes. A couple years ago, we added back in Simon Tech, which is Science Math and Technology Consortium. That gives us access to latest and greatest with the next gen science standards. Now, we have new technology standards coming forth. So, we're staying as part of that particular consortium so that our teachers have access to really nice supportive professional development as we are unpacking and creating essential standards for those new sets of standards. Everything else you can see, if you just run your eyes down and renew, we are renewing all of the other services that we participated in last year, so not a lot of big changes. If you look to the back page, we no longer need line item thirty-seven and thirty-eight, our audiology. We no longer have any students that require that service, so at this time, we're able to drop both of those services. The one other thing that we're picking up is we are grabbing one consultant day for special education in order to continually serve more as a consultant in professional development to help support some of our students, especially those with high needs, especially in behavioral area. So, we're picking up one consultation date that will be used throughout the next eighteen, nineteen school year. So, there you go.
Any questions for Trish? Is Simon Tech the two dollars per student per day? Is that K-12?
Yeah.
And is it a flat fee?
Mm-hmm. They give us access to the planetarium and so on as well. Those aren't the big pieces. The big pieces are, if you want to get into any of the professional development, if you're not part of the consortium, you cannot afford it.
Right.
So, it gets us in the door and gets us access to some great stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, now we move on to item eight, which is the EdCamp and EdTech update. So, Trish?
Moving again.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
So, I have those documents assigned, it was what you just had up there?
Yeah.
Do I have to wait till our board? Or is this coming before the board again, or is this just a...
I think we, next meeting we can sign this information.
Okay.
I think we have to have, we have to have anybody on the march.
Yes, totally, there you go. We'll have one other CISA contract that'll be coming your way also, because we do contract out for some E-rate support, but that's your CISA IX, so it's not part of our shared services for CISA XI. But CISA IX, you'll see just one line item, and that is the services for E-rate. Okay, just real quick, wanted to give you just a little heads up. We have some, I know Catherine, you weren't here yes, last year, and we did our first ever EdCamp.
It was fun.
So much fun. And again, we had such a great year this year. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of peek into what happened that day, as well as a great big thank you. Because these are the kinds of things that we get to do because of our calendar, because of the super tenants collaborating, coming together and finding common dates as well. Last year, we called it Middle Border Conference EdCamp Day. We had to change the name because the word is out, and we have people outside of the middle border who would like to be part of this. So, this year, we brought in St. Croix Falls, and they became part of our EdCamp Day, so now we call it Western Wisconsin. So, if you're not familiar with an EdCamp, it is an UN conference. You know, where you typically would go to a conference and there's a menu of topics that you can go sit down and listen and get information. An EdCamp is kind of the opposite. You go, but you decide what those topics are going to be. You enter into a conversation, it is all about the conversation, and if it's not what you think it is supposed to be, or it's giving you what you need, then you get up and you leave. So, we make that very clear in the very beginning, that it's the rule of two feet. So, if it's not filling you up, if it's not what you thought it was, if it's not good use of your time, get up and get out. It's fabulous. The way we run our EdCamp, because it's too crazy to think we would build these session boards on the fly organically, as it's supposed to be, we actually pre-survey our staff, all staff members, to say, what are two things you'd like to talk about, or hear about, or learn more about? What's something that you can help facilitate or add to a conversation? And so then, from that, we come together and we create these session boards. So, just a few pictures of the fun activities that were going on here. This was happening in our middle school. This Sarah kicked off the middle school. John Dodge is in the top, he's one of L's words middle school principals. They're actually greeting each other through a milking exercise. Oh, yeah.
Good morning!
Good morning! You got it! Uh-huh, the high school people like, woo, glad we weren't at the middle school, but no, a lot of fun, a lot of laughs, a lot of goofiness. Rooms across the campus from the elementary, middle school, high school were just filled with staff members, sitting, talking, looking, sharing, lots of great conversation. Here are the details. This year, it was February 16th. We had seven districts involved, which is pretty spectacular. We had lots of buses. We had some parents that were a little bit confused because they didn't think we had school, but there were buses all over the campus. So, we cleaned up some of that. We had approximately 750 educators here on campus in three different buildings. This year, we had three staff-driven sessions, and I'll show you an example of that. We added in three lunch and learn sessions, so we had options to go over lunch, not a lot, but some topics that came up that really weren't fitting the EdCamp model. You know, an EdCamp is really, there's no expert in the room. You know, the power's in the room, the answer's in the room, and it's the conversation that drives that. The lunch and learn were more of a, you know, sit and get. So, we held one, for example, on if people were interested in becoming nationally board certified. You know, we have Jen Sutton, who just recently achieved that honor, and so she was able to present what that might look like if other people were interested. So, we called those lunch and learns. We had door prizes, we had amazing food, and we had a hashtag that actually was trending, which is really exciting. So, just to give you a picture of what that day and all the details that went into that day looked like. It looks so simple, but boy, I will tell you, that's a lot of brainpower, a lot of people from seven districts coming together. This was our final detail. You can see, we start in all three buildings. We had people divvied out. We had fifth grade in two buildings because we had too many people at the elementary, and some of our districts have fifth grade in a middle school model, some have our fifth grade at the elementary model. So, coffee treats, we had lots of socializing, and then we went into the two sessions. We had a lovely lunch, lunch and learn session. We had affinity groups in the afternoon where like people sat with like people. So, fifth grade's out with fifth grade, or math's out with math, or, you know, and so on. Exit surveys, grand prizes, and so on. I'll just show you an example of a board that they got to pick from, so very personalized in the professional development world. Here's the middle school board. You can see session one and location one, and here's the topics that were generated from, hello, snowman. Topics that were generated from staff numbers. We had notes attached, so everybody could climb into a Google Doc and put in their contact information so they could network afterward, as well as keep notes so they can go back and refer. The last session were just those affinity groups where we set up places where people could meet. So, show you all of the different options that they had. So, lots and lots of opportunities for people to pick something that fit what they needed in that moment. More pictures of our staff and our people from around all three buildings. Lots of community partnerships. So, because of seven districts, we reached out to seven communities, and people were wonderful. They all pitched in, either helped to supply door prizes, or helped us with great deals on food and beverages, or what have you. So, there's just a few of the people that donated and were part of our day, and a few more. We also had a swag table set up, or we had some of the big companies that we work with who also donated wonderful chapsticks, you know, those things that we all love and grab as quickly as we can. This is a group from Prescott. This is their first year here. Prescott did not participate last year, so this year, they actually had the right day, and so they sent about thirty-five people. The thirty-five people called us the next day and said, what day is it next year? Because we're bringing everybody.
How much does it cost for Prescott to send people?
The only cost associated with this is the cost for the food, any kind of like supplies that we divvy out, and if we have any sort of little prize bag. There's really not a very big cost at all when you divvy it out. Last year, I believe it came to about eleven dollars for the whole day.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing, amazing. Bang for your buck. The really great thing about last year is so many of the groups that met that day continued their meetings once a month or once a quarter. The music people, the art people, they continue to meet. Once you bring people together, you realize there's no other way to operate, and that you can figure things out together, and so they kept up those groups. So, it's a lot of fun. So, Prescott is coming back in full force next year. Just a little side note, this was a class, this is one I walked into at the elementary school. There were hot topics in each of the buildings, of course. The hot topic at the middle school was standards-based grading, grading for learning, because many of the schools in the CISA XI are moving to that at the middle school level. So, everybody wanted to know, the best way to, how do we do it? How do we tackle that stuff? At the elementary, it was mindfulness, trauma-informed care. It was, it was this room. I got there early, and I was taking pictures and meeting and greeting, and pretty soon we're bringing in racks of chairs. And I opened up a second room, but nobody would go. I mean, they all wanted to stay in that room, and I, Bobby and Julie, our counselors at the elementary, helped to facilitate this group, so we had someone kind of dropped in there so that they could spark conversation and get things going, but I told them that I would be sharing that with the board, but that is something that, it was, it was a sign of kind of what we need and where we're going. So, they were a lot of fun. We were trending, hashtag Western Wisconsin PLC. If you look it up in the Twitter world, you're going to see that we were actually out there trending away, and it was a lot of fun. So, across campus, everybody was throwing stuff out on Twitter and having a great time. One last note, you can't read that, but I did pluck a little piece out of there. We had prizes throughout the day, so we had door prizes as people were in session. At the very end, when we came back together to process the day, we had about four or five grand prizes. And those we had pre-drawn at the end of the day, and then we had them up on big screen. And this gentleman from St. Croix Falls won one of the grand prizes, which was two tickets to the wild. And so, he wrote a wonderful thank you note and sent it out to all of us. But this is something I plucked off of that thank you note that you can't really read very well there. He just said, I was happy to win the grand prize, but I think the students, parents, or communities were also grand prize winners that day. In St. Croix Falls, it was the first time that they had attended, so that was a lot of fun to see the value there. Also, huge shout out. This is the second year we've held it at Somerset. There's a couple of big reasons for that. One, we've got a campus environment. So, a year ago, we did it in October. It was awesome, because people were bouncing between buildings. If there was a session at the high school they'd like to go to, they'd come here. If there's a session and they can, they can ebb and flow wherever they want. That's the whole point of this UN conference. There are no rules. This year, it was February, it was a little cold, but people were still out and about. But we have a beautiful campus environment and one of the few schools that could really hold 750 people and give everybody what they need. So, that was awesome. The second reason it was here is because we have Susan, and Lisa, and Chris, and Sarah, and Shannon, and everybody who had been through this once, our building chiefs, George, and Brad, and Bill, and we were holding all sorts of meetings like, alright, the coffee table, we need two lines, two lines! You know, because we learned from year one about traffic flow in our buildings, and where people need to go, and what we needed more of, and where we needed to have some different situations. So, this couldn't have happened without all hands in. And this year, just to let you know, it was really fun, because I bopped between all three buildings, and Susan just said, this is my favorite day of the whole year. And I looked, and I'm like, she goes, I love seeing teachers hugging and, you know, embracing kids and welcoming them in, but I love seeing teachers doing that to other teachers for kids. And she just said it was a lot of fun, because last year, Sarah was the ringleader down there. We had point people. This year, it was Sarah, John, and Scott Benoy, who are all the other principals, who now know the building, they know the routine, they know what to push on the phone in order to make an announcement. So, it's just all kind of coming together. Next year, we have it back in October. Yay, thank you, Mark. Amory will be coming back. Others may not be able to come, depending on what's going on in their districts, but it's a lot of fun. So, thank you for the opportunity to do this here.
Thank you. Any questions for Trish? I know there are a lot of wireless updates that were done right before the first one, and do you feel like our technology was able to support?
One hundred percent.
That's awesome.
One hundred percent. We had, we had one hiccup, and that was with St. Croix Falls. And they had something set on their side that wasn't allowing their people to get in there. He was struggling. And sending out, I was like, I am so sorry, but that was the only hiccup, and it was one school, and it was on their side, so yay. Yeah, it worked really well.
Well, it's good to see all that collaboration, that's always positive.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so that was item six and item eight. Next up, Trish, that's everything you have.
No, I got one more thing.
Oh, you got one more?
I have EdTech Day, because usually these are two times of the year, but they happen to be back-to-back, and we did that because of some other timing issues. So, just really quickly, if you click into that, the other thing I just want to say thank you for is, throughout the year, once a year especially, you know, we dip in, and we've got a tech team that really tries to help people come along and understand and pick things up, and, you know, to really understand what people need. But, but once a year, we do kind of a bigger deal, and we take that tech team, and we've always gone to TIES. And we learn something fabulous at TIES, and make it personalized, they come back and they offer sessions. So, we have another case of personalized PD where people get to choose. This year, we looked at TIES, and we said, mm, and we had Title IV money that I told you about at the last meeting. So, I took our team to SLATE. SLATE is the Wisconsin version of our technology. I don't know what it stands for, do you know what it stands for?
No.
Something later than technology and education.
Leadership and technology.
Yep. So, took them there and came back, and then we pre-surveyed all the staff to see if there's something they were hoping to learn about. You know, because we've got people in different places with Google, and Google Apps, and Google Docs, and all sorts of things. We took that information, and we took the new stuff, and then each person came up with something that they offered. We sent this out ahead of time, so people could preregister, so we made sure we had appropriate spaces and appropriate technology so people could learn. So, I just wanted to attach that so you could see who went, what they offered. We had levels, we had intended audiences. You can see everything from coding to back to Google Apps, there it was, storyboarding, and so on, it goes on and on. Another great day. We had them, when they could, attach their presentations, so that if you couldn't attend one, you could go back and pick it up and see, or follow up with the person who taught it. We kicked us off with Kevin Honeycutt, who's just an amazing art teacher by trade, who's really all about personalized learning and getting kids engaged into their global world using technology. Took one of his full keynotes, he was at SLATE, and just brought it down to twenty minutes. And so, we had everyone together, kind of framing our day with his thinking, forward thinking, and then off to the races we went with everyone picking two sessions to attend, but having access to everything here. So, we did that the morning of the nineteenth, and then most people had the afternoon nineteenth to just kind of process all the information from Friday and from Monday morning. So, wanted to share that with you too. So, thank you for those days again, thank you for the calendar. We make very good use of that time. Lots of growing, lots of sharing. Couldn't do without that. Okay? Enjoy. If there's anything there that you see you'd like to know more about, we can connect you with those instructors and get you all ready.
Yeah, and those active links, do we have access to those?
Yeah.
Or are they closed with a password?
Nope. You should have active links.
If you're ever looking for another conference, the Midwest Google Conference, down at the Dells, they do it twice a year.
Great.
It's amazing, and it's focused, you know, whereas TIES and SLATE are broader, if you're wanting to build that. And I'd highly recommend sending your IT people too, because there's a lot of stuff on the console side.
Yeah, we look to see if IT should come with us this year, and SLATE is just not. SLATE is much more leadership and technology education.
But the Midwest Google's in that house of all of it.
What time of year do those run?
One is December, maybe, the other's March. I can say that.
Thank you. Alright.
Any other questions for Trish? Safe travels.
Yes, and I'm gonna pick up those little slips from you guys right now.
So, there's a little slip in front of you asking for a size of t-shirt for the amazing EdCamp t-shirts that Trish is wearing.
Did you get mine one?
I did.
Yay, thank you. Thank you.
Sort of be like yours?
It'll be, yeah, it's like, ooh! Yeah! Same, it's awesome.
Is it cotton? Hundred percent cotton?
Yes, I should probably go on that. I'll put you beside it. So, we're back. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we had agreed to move item season eight up to the top. Now, we have item nine, which would be John and Dave for the budget report for athletics and activities. Any comments?
I'm here.
Thanks. Thank you.
In addition to an overview on the Department of Activities and Athletics monies and a breakdown of how our expenditures go for a given year, there was also a request to put together some numbers that reflect participation in all of our groups, both activities and athletics. So, I did some bean counting on these areas as well. Suppose there can be a number of different ways to, you know, connect these figures together, but it does allow for you right now to look at, first with participation, went back four years from when I started here in fourteen and fifteen to the present year. Through our school software, it tracks student registrations and participation, so with not a great deal of effort, we can kind of see how things are moving in terms of participation through the activities that we have and athletics that we offer, in terms of just the number of students who are out and involved in these, in these groups. Point of distinction on the difference between registrations. So, in a given year, in a given year, you can see, for example, in fourteen and fifteen, we had approximately six hundred and twenty-eight registrations for activities and athletics. That far exceeds, for example, the enrollment of our high school that year, but that takes into account that we have several students who are involved in more than one sport and/or activity. But what I was able to do is then take the enrollment against the actual number of students who were involved in however many activities or sports that year. So, for example, two thousand fourteen and fifteen, of our five hundred and one students that year at the high school, three hundred and thirty-six of our students were involved in at least one, possibly more than, more than one sport or, or activity, which would give a percent of the high school student body being involved in our extracurricular offerings. So, I thought that just might be a point of interest. Did not break it down that way on the backside, did not break it down that way for the middle school. It could be, it could be broken down that way if there was a request for that. There's a, there's a few more variables involved in the middle school. For example, bringing in St. Anne's students. For some of our sports, we do offer sixth graders the opportunity to be involved, especially cross-country, middle school cross-country, and middle school wrestling. So, there would be, there would be a few more asterisks attached to, to breaking it down that way.
We're looking for an outlet.
Power. It's got a power cord on it.
It should be, your table should be plugged in.
But primarily, what Dr. Bezek had asked for and was interested in, that you could see, you could see some trends possibly through previous four years, where, where are we gaining, where are we gaining interest in, in some of the activities? Is there a decline in some of the participation of our activities? So, hopefully, this allows some of that information to just be a little bit more forward here as some decisions are being made in terms of, we continue to make proposals to increase staff in some of these groups. For example, this spring, connecting with Dave on this, for example, right now, robotics has grown from a sixteen student group to a thirty student group, and we have, we have one person on the payroll for that, and he's asked and made a request to see if we can't add a staff member there in terms of an assistant coach for robotics. And there's, there's a few other groups in the same situation that could use a lift that, that could use a lift and support as a, as a, as a pay, as a paid culture advisor. So, these numbers can shed some light on some of those proposals and requests that are being made.
Do you know how many, I think, when we saw this last, it was also broken down by gender. Do we have that or no?
I, I do have that, I do have that as we do make those reports to the WIA. So I do have that on a three-year basis, male and female involved in our athletics.
Right, yeah.
Just cause I, I have to, I have to count those numbers for our WIA reports.
Is that just on a different, like, recording thing?
Well, it's a form, it's a form that I fill out and send to the WIA. I have copies of those, of those numbers. I could easily, easily let you show some of those as involved with the high school athletics.
Yeah, okay.
And if, there is, there is a way to pull it again out of our, our, our school software that we use for registrations. It just would be, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of bean counting. If that isn't, if that is an interest, it can be done.
I see that's full drama is portion.
Yep, the, and all this is great support, you know. Mark has made the idea, you know, we need, we need some ammunition for some of our initiatives here. If we look at the arts, if we look at the music programs, we are seeing gains. And these are, these are facility needs that can be supported by the interest and the participation that we have from our students in these areas. It's, it's, it's growing and it's a, it's a tribute and a compliment to the people involved in the programs and what they're doing with the resources that we apparently have. So, hopefully the community grows and sees some of our requests. They'll see these, they'll see these numbers as well as a way to, we really need to continue to support these programs.
John, I was looking at some of our data on Wise Dash. And on Wise Dash, they break down extracurriculars into three different areas, academic, athletic and music. I had two questions. What, what extracurriculars fall into the category of academic? And then where does drama fall?
So, what I do with that Nancy is if, if the students are actually going to our activities registration site and registering for an activity or an athletic, I, I include it in this report. For example, for some of the music and choir that is part of the academic day, our students are not registering for those things. So, that's how I would sort it out in terms of people asking me, for example, choir, or just band time. That's part of our academic day, so students are not registering for those things.
Gotcha. So the academic piece is something that occurs during the school day?
Correct.
Whereas the athletic and music are things that occur after the school day and that students have to register?
Well, our, our athletics and activities in terms of some of the arts, drama, dynamics, those are after-school hour type activities, yes.
But for purposes of this report to the, to the DPI, is that how it's reported to them? That the academic is, that that is during the school day and then, or is that like?
I, I would venture, I would venture to say that, yes, that's, that's a criteria. Although with some of our activities, so that we can get more students involved, I think it's, it's important to note that we do offer some of the activity time during the school day, like homeroom time. So that kids are not making decisions on some of the activities based upon being out for sports because they're just obviously going to conflict at time and kids are gonna have to make choices. So one unique thing that I see at Somerset that not necessarily true at other schools, it is we try to make some of the meeting times and practice times for activities to happen during our free times during the school day so that a student could be involved in a sport in the fall and involved in mock trial, still participate in dynamics, forensics, without having to choose between that and a sport because the only time these things are going to meet is after school. We do have, to answer that question Nancy, we do have activities that, that do connect during the school day. But it's, it's not considered academic time. I was saying, it's kind of a unique thing about our schedule that really ups our participation in athletics and activities. But it's, high 60, 70% participation rate amongst our high school students is, is high. That, that's a, I see that as a positive number, that that many kids are choosing to do extra things.
I have a question. The productive reduction in uniform costs, why is that?
Okay, so, over to the actual numbers of the department. Around the glass, Patty. Been kind of a, well, not kind of, it's been a three-year, kind of a three-year philosophy and a plan. With the technology of uniforms now, there's a technology of sublimation where the, the uniforms can be more easily replicated. So what we've really tried to do, this was, you know, some of it, you know, I know other schools are doing, is just establish that brand look. I mean, one could maybe cite Penn State. If you followed Penn State football for four decades, you turn on, turn on TV and it's the same, it's the same shirt. And so, for example, our football teams actually have been doing this for almost 20 years. They have the same red shirt and the same white shirt. And on a regular basis, if we need to replace four red shirts, that's what we do. Or we need to replace two white shirts, that, that's what we do. So, I've implemented that through the, through the sports teams to get a stock, brand, look, uniform. And with the sublimation technology, we don't have to order sets of 30 when a team needs a new uniform. We can, we can keep our uniforms fresh, have a fresh look and have a brand consistent look. So, and we've achieved that now with all that one team, which would be on the rotation for that next year. So at this point moving forward, all the groups in any given year, we may order three baseball shirts or two basketball jerseys. And it's gonna significantly reduce uniform costs.
That's great. Good idea.
That's a philosophy that's gonna have to be carried through.
Yeah, we all remember rooms full of old jerseys. We don't have used any more.
Yeah.
And six months into my job, there was, back in 1450, there was a rumor that I was eliminating black from the stock.
Terrible.
Not, not necessarily true. But we did have all kinds of different colors like organ. You'd never know in one week from the next what, what they were in our uniforms gonna look like. But, we've kind of got a stock, brand, look going now. And if that philosophy holds, it can save the district money over time.
And are there differences in which sports get uniforms?
No, we've been on.
Was it any sport that the?
We've been on it consistently. Tried to, prior to this, where now we can refresh whenever we need to. But uniforms generally from school to school and so down here, it's kind of on a five-year rotation. They start to look tired and worn and try to update them on a five-year rotation. Some, some can make it five years, others start to look pretty shoddy, it's all that long, but.
And then everybody looks good and it's more equal.
Right.
Cause you're, what you're getting at, I think, is that yes, there used to be some inconsistencies between sports.
Yeah. I, I think there's, I think there's a perception of that. I, I've never experienced that. You know, I taught youth coach for 16 years and I've never, you know, schools just because of budgets and monies, just like here, there's, this is kind of a rotation. You gotta take care of things and, and make it work. I haven't experienced here, other than us just really getting the teams what they need and us to look professional and presentable when the kids hit the floors in our town and other towns, that we really try to stay on those rotations. Hasn't been for any other reason other than if we've been off of that five-year rotation, it's just, we can't wear these anymore. They're, they're just tired and they're, they're, the white has turned to yellow and, and so forth, so. I don't know way back or whenever, I just know what I've done since I've been here.
I have two more questions. The next question is for event workers for winter and spring sports. Now, do some of them donate that back to like the booster clubs or whatever? And how does that work? Or is this all go to them, to their, to a paycheck to them?
Starting this year, we, well, last year, we had our, we paid our ticket takers, which was the Somerset Scholarship Committee. All the way through last year, we were still on the Somerset pride and tradition of having volunteer workers at, at our events. This year, we got through the fall, still holding that. But then, we, we switched to paying our event workers for the winter season. So these dollar amounts reflect the amount that we paid the fall ticket takers for volleyball and all the workers that we paid through this winter season.
For all sports?
Yes.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Hockey?
Hockey's not involved in that because they, they cover.
By volunteer, I don't have a paycheck.
So you, you, you would not have received a $30. You wouldn't have received a $30 check for handling the penalty box.
So don't say all sports. Cause if I take tickets at a hockey game, I don't get paid.
Right.
If I take tickets at a volleyball game, I do.
But why is that? What, what made us move from?
It's a deal, I think, we're not.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not saying it clearly. Why did we move to paying them? Because I thought it was a really good commitment for the parents to be involved and for them to line it up and schedule it through their student athletes or student activity participants. What made the decision going to paying ticket takers? Did those dollars, were they donating to the scholarship fund? Possibly?
So, well, in the specific case with the ticket takers, that money's not going to any individual. That's money that, that the Somerset Scholarship Committee provides the workers to sell the tickets at the volleyball events and all the winter events, basketball and wrestling.
Yeah.
So that's a check that we just cut right to the Somerset Scholarship Committee. Not any of the individuals.
So I see that a little different than paying ticket takers.
Or was that what was happening before?
Before it was coaches that would have parents. We parents had to sign up for it.
So that's 6,500 that goes to the Somerset Scholarship.
That's how I would read what you just said.
Okay, so, our event workers, the amount of money we've spent on event workers this year so far is $6,500. That includes the amount that we've paid to the Somerset Scholarship Committee and everyone else who has worked winter events. Scorebooks, clockkeeper, line judges.
Oh, okay, so everybody, everybody's getting one?
Everyone, everyone, yes.
Okay.
Cause this winter, we had quote-unquote, "no volunteers working our events."
Well, that's, I mean, that's a phenomenon that's going on in everywhere. Nobody's volunteering, volunteering.
They, they never work for you.
No, but it's changing, it's changing in, in communities. I mean, volunteering is not as robust as it used to be. People have to work and.
They were always surprised that Somerset had volunteers.
We were, we were pretty much a standalone.
So I'd like to see us get back to that because it was successful.
Well, I don't necessarily know we will get back to it because of work and all that there, I think.
When you have people handling money, you want them to be employed, you want to do a background check, all those kinds of things.
Well, I think, you know, my perspective is, the essence of it is, things like ticket takers, it's, it's nice to have, okay, this, these are hired people to do it. Cause you are handling school cash and all this sort of stuff. Quite honestly, I, I think Somerset was a standalone entity in having this volunteer system. But it, it's, it's a challenge. It's, it's a challenge to.
It definitely takes coordination.
Yeah, it's a challenge to constantly coordinate, to get the consistency of, of having people, especially when it comes to running a clock and a scorebook. If you like not to have just, you know, the guy that shows up that night, hey, can you keep the book? It's, there's some consistencies that need to be in play with understanding how events run from managing a clock to running the book, et cetera. So, there, there are some benefits to the moving away from the volunteer. Although there's, you know, the, the great Somerset pride and that's just how we've done it for years. But doesn't necessarily mean that it's.
Sandy and Naomi are, are tired now.
Right. Yeah, and, and my wife was not willing to run the concession stand, so.
Yeah, that's, I, I get it. My, my next question is, under revenues, where does donations fit in here? Like, I know, I talked to a little energy initiative, said they donated a significant amount of money for football helmets. Where, where does that report?
That, that did include any of our Fund 21 donation dollars in an overview of what we're spending district dollars to operate these activities and athletics. We have, people would be astounded at the amount of equipment and things that we're purchasing through fundraising donations. Yeah, I can just cite.
How do we get access to that?
We, we have the records of our Fund 21 accounts. And as far as the high school is concerned, we have, it's all umbrellaed under Fund 21, but then on our side, we keep track of all the different groups who are raising money individually, whether it's drama, dynamics, forensics, football, basketball. When they have a fundraiser, it goes into the Fund 21 pot. Is that a good word, Dave? Goes into the Fund 21 account, but we keep track of it. We keep track of it individually for all the groups so they know what portion of that is theirs to spend for things that they're doing with their individual teams or activities.
Well, my concern was, this particular donation is, I was questioned about it and I didn't know anything about it and I felt really stupid for that. So, I mean, if, if people are giving significant donations, I think the board should know about it.
Well, I think we, I think we've addressed that now with the, we, we have the policy, anything over $250, there's a form that's filled out and that's automatically brought to the board for a check and acknowledgement. So that, that should not happen anymore, Patty.
So, and have we, do we get a lot of personal donations from families? I mean, is that something that historically, we've had a lot of those?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen personal families. There've been some. The, the fundraising that comes in is from businesses, actual fundraising activities that are taking place, whether it's pizza sales or meat raffles, cookie go sales, those types of things.
How much do we take in on meat raffles, for example?
Well, I know that some of our groups right now who are doing Friday night meat raffles, maybe, maybe $200 and maybe $400.
And are those our school sponsors?
A lot of the meat raffles right now are being done by the clubs, so.
And then how does that money, is that money donated to the school or some of it or?
Some of it, some of it, yeah. The, so the club's soccer, soccer writes out checks to us. And if you look at almost $9,000 worth of improvements that have been done to this complex right up here, a lot of that has even been paid directly by the club to the vendors doing that work, the sound system, the dugouts. Or if I'm ordering that equipment, soccer club is writing out checks to us to cover that expense.
So that's all then recorded as a donation? From the club?
When, when a club makes a donation to the school, district Fund 21 account, it's, it's cash recapped and recorded.
Um, what happens with concessions?
Concessions is a, is a Fund 21 cash recap going into our athletics and activities Fund 21 accounts. And that's, that's shared for whatever our needs come up in any of our activities. We need those, it's not in the budget, that's, that's a place where we can go and, and make that happen.
So who works the concession stands? Is that a paid, is that event worker?
No, none of our, none of our concession people are paid event people. In the fall, it's been, it's been a, a group that's been organized by, by, by large for seven decades. And it's.
I've been here 100 years.
Seven, seven, seven ladies, a couple of guys knocking down the football concessions every fall. And then, in the winter, we take all the activities and sports teams and take the event schedule and try to get every group to take a night with the advisor coach and possibly a couple of students. And then at the end of the sports season, we take the total revenues of the concession stand less, less the cost of buying Gatorade and all the other, all the other items. And we get a total and divide it evenly, the profit shares divided evenly through all the groups who work. So that a late, a late night of a wrestling match where we maybe only brought in $120, that isn't what that group earned. When I'm enriching a basketball game, it might have been a $420 night. It's not fair. So, now like the system, everybody takes a part of the season, share the load and you just share the profit at the end of the season.
Can I ask you about the 24% increase for officials?
Uh, yes, and it's going up. It's going up. This is a, this is, this is a, this is a rising cost in high school athletics. You can see that that's a very large number in the total picture of what we're spending money on. And we were, we were informed through the athletic directors group here this past month that, for example, And, uh, we were, we were informed, uh, through the, uh, athletic directors, uh, group here this past month, that for example, a varsity official won eighty dollars at a given event. That is increasing to ninety dollars probably next year.
Because who wants to do it? It's, there's not a good fun job.
There, there, there is a decreasing pool.
And they have to travel and.
Yeah, and.
And how much do we pay a sum a day?
Hundred dollars a day. What was it, Dave?
Just say it.
Yeah, I hear you.
Just say it. For a whole day.
Yeah, right. This is an hour.
There's a few people who are local, but I think one also needs to consider, we don't pay mileage with this, but we have people traveling.
I think some is getting mileage in now.
Yeah, but there are people traveling from Barron, Eau Claire, Ellsworth. They, they're, they're stretching, they're, they're stretching from distances to, uh, work these games.
I'm gonna sign up to officiate.
You'll do it once. I'll go to game.
Girls, girls soccer, basketball and tires.
I think it'd be hot.
Um, so the total that's listed on here?
I did that get baby off.
John, is that the total budget for the year or the total that's been expended thus far?
What's your question?
So the total of a hundred and fifteen thousand eighty, is that the total budget for the year or the total that's been expended thus far?
That's, that's what I'm forecasting by June thirtieth.
Okay. And then the reimbursements or revenues, this is the estimated total for the year also?
Yeah, we don't have the total, uh, we don't have the total registration fee yet, but because we're still signing up spring sports. So that forty-seven thousand was, it went to, went to the art school registration site, pulled total deposits into our account from, uh, last year, sixteen, seventeen, and that was forty-seven thousand.
And that's also that.
I'm a little, I'm a little light on the, um, I'm a little light on the reimbursements for co-op expenses, uh, because, uh, in full disclosure, I haven't, I haven't included in that number, uh, the coaches' salaries, which all the schools share that expense as well. This is.
What do you mean all schools?
For hockey?
Well, we, boys, boys hockey, it's St. Clair Falls, Osceola and Somerset. We take all the expenses together, travel, trainer, officials, and just divide it all by all three schools. Girls hockey, it's five schools that share the costs.
So what I'm hearing is that there's, the reimbursements and revenues is larger because of spring registration, potentially adding donations?
Well, I think, I think if our, if our collective fees get to the forties this year, that'll be strong. Uh, because right now they're at thirty-eight something.
Yeah.
So, I guess that's just last year's total after the spring sports concluded.
Yeah, but then there's also donations and concessions. That would be.
No, don't include those in our Fund Ten.
Not Fund Ten, but they are used to support the program.
They're not, they're not used to, we, we don't, we don't go into Fund Twenty-One for these, for these base expenses.
So what do we buy with Fund Twenty-One?
Extra, we buy, we buy extra equipment. Our weight room at the high school is ninety-seven percent Fund Twenty-One. The school built that weight room and almost every piece of equipment in that, that this past year and a half, we've added eight thousand dollars worth of equipment to that, uh, weight room. And not one of those dollars had hit Fund Ten.
So it's kind of capital or capital type expenses?
Can be, it, it can be.
I mean, the weight room would be equipment, but.
Right.
More expensive.
But it could be goalie nets, or I mean, it could be nets if they need an extra set or.
Yeah, true. And you try, try to do something extra with the sound system, so.
Rewire the soundboard.
Yeah. So is this ratio of, um, operating slightly over budget to what we take in typical?
Yes, there's, I don't know of a school out there that is, that is operating in the black because of, of revenues versus expenses. There's, there's just, there's just going to be an outlay from a district. I think, you know, what they mentioned, Mark, is, you know, if, if one would look at the revenues, but that's not really factored into our expense budget, but if one would look at the revenues, uh, that, that are coming back into the district and not through the, uh, not, not through the athletic fund, uh, but because of it. And they're also looking at the type of participation we have, it's, you know, it's a pretty good bank for the buck.
Unless you raise your activity fees up, so.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what, you wanna keep them as low as possible.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of like the city, you know, the parks don't make money, but keep them up. You know, this is, you know, something that, this is our biggest bank for a buck.
It's actually closer than I thought it would be.
Yeah, I think most, uh, and most administrators might look at this and it's less than, it's less than one percent of a eighteen million dollar budget, but it has.
Well, the marketable value of this.
It has a large, it has a large percent marketing and exposure value of this.
Cause we can offer a full high school experience for kids. They can play three sports, they can be in the play, they can, you know, they don't have to be just one, experts at one thing. I think that's a huge marketable piece for us.
Good piece for a school of size.
Yep, and keeping those fees low is important.
Well, and it's like this, I think, that schools have to work.
And, and I will say, um, you know, if, I'm over budget. I was over budget last year, we're over budget this year, and I've kind of pooled and polled some of the co, uh, schools in the area. Our activity, our, our budget includes all high school, middle school activities and athletics. Some of our neighboring counterparts have a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, just for high school athletics. It does not include forensics, it does not include drama, it does not include all those activities, so. I, I've tried to stretch dollars, I, I know, like I said, we're, we're, we're over budget. I guarantee you, uh, no one is getting wants, we are operating on needs.
Well, and we have results too. I mean, we look at our music program and our, we, our plays, both middle school and high school have two full paths. Our cheerleaders are awesome, our dance team, I mean, robotics, we're very well-rounded. There's, there's something for almost everybody here in that sort of, so it's, it's a good deal, yeah.
Any other questions for John?
That's the snapshot, I try to be fair and disclose the numbers here.
Yeah.
That's all we're doing.
Uh, before you go on to the next item on the agenda, I would just like to add, uh, middle school, or not even middle school, it's middle school and high school, speak up. We started with about twenty, twenty-five kids last year and we're up to forty-five, we doubled our number.
Oh.
Yeah, and that's, that's gonna be a recommendation to move that to activities. Uh, we're currently operating that, uh, under.
Club.
Uh, club, community ed dollars. But it could be the recommendation with a, a couple advisors. Uh, we have quite a few high school students who are entering into the realm of competition skiing, which they offer a troll hogging. So that'll be one of the proposals coming up here, that we move ski club to an activity because the numbers are there, there's forty, forty kids. So that's on, that's on.
It's a throwing sport.
We used to have one of those.
Yeah, the other thing, um, I was at Pheasants Forever this weekend and they were talking about the trap shooting. I did, was surprised how many schools in the middle board conference have a track team.
Really?
I, I was floored and we're like the only one that doesn't.
No, we, we are co-op with the New Richmond trap shooting. And so our kids, our kids trap shoot with, uh, New Richmond currently.
How many kids do we have?
Yeah, I know how many boys are out, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just, I didn't even know that it existed.
Yeah, yeah. There's also competition ice fishing teams.
Huh, I knew that, I knew that. You can, you can get a four-year scholarship on fishing.
But this is our, this is our, this is our third year with, uh, uh, co-upping with, uh, New Richmond trap shooting team.
And how do our kids do?
Don't hear much from them, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Bowling, don't we do that with bowling? We've got another.
I'm not aware of that, bowling.
All right, any other questions for John?
What's that?
Okay, so hearing none, we are going to move back up to number five. Oh, okay, Trish, you stuck around just for that.
Step around.
Thank you.
That's a good teacher. He can interpret.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Um, Ellsworth is women organizing this whole time, so. Makes you happy for your class to gather itself.
That's nice. All right, so thank you, Trish and John, for sticking around in the inclement weather.
You're welcome.
Um, so we have covered items, um, six, eight and nine. Um, and we have, we agreed at the beginning of the meeting to remove item seven. That leaves us five, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Um, looking at the time and knowing the weather outside. Um, Mark, with item five, is there anything pressing?
No, well, no, there isn't, but there's nothing on our end of things, so it's just, if you have additional questions or anything, that would be the only thing there. Otherwise, they're ready to go to policies.
So, um, let's look at item number five. Um, board members, were there any questions about policy two-two-six-one, parent participation in Title One programs?
There are two guidelines, Essa and that, we're meeting all of them right now, so we're all of dispute on that.
I'll make a motion that may approve.
No, no, this is just discussion tonight, they're, they would move forward for approval on the, the next meeting.
Oh, they'll go on the consent agenda?
Um, so then, um, hearing no questions about item.
We talked about monitoring television watching down here. Is that ever something that we're gonna tell, I'm just, it doesn't, I don't want to talk, talk a lot to anyone, but.
I tell you, aren't these mostly?
Taken and given by somebody else or something?
Well, they're, if it's title, it's fed.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that is all the current legislation, everything, they go through them and then it's just, do we want to tweak anything? And that's what our people look at, is there anything in there that we, is worth a tweak or not? And on, on all these particular four, there isn't anything that we're recommending. So these are all, you know, either federal or statutory changes. And we're gonna, just to say, we're living up to these, I mean, we can do these pieces of ourselves.
Um, we get things for our kids, Bruce, that are like, um, what's your plan for spring break? How many minutes of TV are you gonna watch? Or, you know, um, helping things to do this month with your family or, um.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just look at this and it looks like a school, we're telling you that.
They're guiding.
Yeah.
Well, and it's just that parents will be provided.
This information.
Information. Um, so then we're on, um, five B, which would be policy two-four-three-one. Any questions about that one, extracurricular athletics? It looks already straightforward. Did we make a suggestion about the district approved physician? I'm not seeing anything selected here.
I think we went on forever, looked at two and said, well, we're just the way it is, because there was, um, on the athletic one, but on the next one, we've got a free workplace, one is the one that.
So the, I mean, the little parentheses there mean we have to select it or not select it?
We've paraged him.
So.
All this one right here.
In the past, it's always been whichever.
Whatever your own physician had, I don't think we've ever had a district.
We don't have a.
I don't know, we could.
So are we not selecting that then, so that will be struck through?
So.
I would say it's fine as it is.
We give you the twenty strike.
It's fine as it is, the district approved, if we, it's not saying district in the district, it's saying just want to prove by the district. And I think our district would approve whoever is a working physician, a certified or whatever.
Well, yeah, but not necessarily because you might go to a nurse practitioner, you might go.
Is there, but is there anything wrong with that? So do you want that term changed?
Well, I don't think it should be district approved, it should be.
Boy certified with state of Wisconsin?
No, I think it should be family practice, the family practitioner, the family, I mean, there's.
I mean, you should go to a doctor and get it done.
The second one speaks to the physician's statement, which I believe is a health card.
Yeah.
That students have had to turn in, that can be signed by anyone who, that can provide a sports physical, which could be a DA or a.
I think that's what you want. Nurse practitioner or, I think in Wisconsin, it could be a chiropractor.
They're taking that, to me, when I'm reading that second one, is saying we don't have to do the physical. So is that, and that's what I'm seeing as the difference between the first one and this one.
Well, that is a.
You're probably not gonna get B without a physical.
You have to have that, it's, as, to me, when I was working at the health office, as long as the card was signed, it was signed. I, but if you say district approved, now we're gonna go out and do an RFP.
No.
And that.
That's not ours.
I look at A and Bs as options.
Yeah.
I look at A and Bs as options.
Yeah.
To leave them there and if they want to meet any of those criteria.
Oh, A, yeah, you're right. Yeah, well, and we probably have something in our script, in our handbook that defines what.
Yeah.
Our activities handled?
Yeah. Not currently.
Well, I don't know, but chances are, that would be in the center.
Can you just go back and look at that more and see certification?
See if it's on the table too.
Perfect.
It should be because it's recorded.
Who died?
That's my first thought. That's the right thought to have.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what happens.
I feel worried here, my daughter is in tummy.
Okay, so we have a question about the physical requirements and how they align with our handbook. Um, so Mark, can you go up on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on to five C, policy three-one-two-two-point-zero-one, direct fee workplace.
This is the one that, uh, we had a question on before that terms that leave it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do you run that?
Yeah.
Okay, so no further questions on that one?
No.
All right, and then five D is suspension and expulsion.
I think we've worked, worked through that. Yeah, we're good with that and that's why we added that on this piece.
Okay, so other questions about that one? All right, so now we can move on to item ten, human resources audit update. And the update Mark will be sharing will be shortened, um, because they were not able to have the meeting of the employee council, you know, for school today.
You know, the, uh, Victoria was out of class, uh, last Thursday and worked with, uh, all the principals of the administrative team, because we had a bunch of cleanup to do on classifying positions and categorizing it. And, you know, the, the whole process, we're trying to make this simpler. And, um, from the handbook to the schedules, just make it very easy to understand. So what's happening right now, you know, it's, it's a lot more detail than I imagined, but we, um, I think maybe the, the first update, I said that fifty-two percent of our non-certified people are on the market significantly. Uh, they've, they've come back with recommendations on all these positions and schedules and what have you. And so right now, Dave and I have to sit down now and take a look and see how this fits into the budget before we make a recommendation. The one piece we have with the teacher's schedule, uh, is kind of interesting because they came back with three different types of schedules. And I see two of them very feasible, but they're different, they're different models. The three models, uh, one is very similar to the old step and lane schedule, which, yeah, I'm okay with that. That's probably, you know, each one of these has a price tag with it. And it goes from what the market is and then it spreads, you know, up and down. And again, Dave and I have to each one of them, take a look and see what's realistic because, you know, one of the schedules, I think, is starting is like forty-nine thousand. You know, and that's just so they can make the percentages work. So we have to, and that's taken from the market value. So Dave and I have to take a look and see what should those numbers be that we can afford. Now, the step and lane schedule is probably the most affordable price tag. There's another schedule that's very interesting, but it, it, uh, it keeps the steps, but it shrinks the lanes. And there's some very, you know, very good rationale with that, but again, we've got to look at the numbers on that to make sure that it's in a framework that, and we don't break the bank. Then there's another model that is kind of off the charts as far as, is, is that, it's abstract, but it doesn't deal with steps and lanes. It deals with, uh. It deals with tiers, you know, you get placed in a tier. And it's a lot of, you know, you can accomplish this kind of work over here, you get paid extra for it, there's less tentacles to it. And it's, that's a very expensive one, but Dave and I have to, this is our next step, because this just came.
Go ahead.
This, this just came to us on Thursday, the cleanup on these, so we're still digesting, digesting this question.
So when you said, you just said that you and Dave have, you know, the second one, the starting salary was forty-nine.
I'm just using it as an example.
Right, right. But you said that you and Dave have to take a look at it and see what we're going to start out at.
What, what, what the recommendation would be?
Yeah, my point is though, that's what the grad study is supposed to tell us. That's using the comparables that were provided to them. So I just want to make that very clear, because I get nervous when you're not using the actual data that was collected.
Oh, we'll have all the, we'll have all the data out there. It's, and her caveat to us is, you know, can you afford these models? And, you know, because there's two of them that I just, you know, it's, you know, let's just take the teacher's schedule in general. We have a problem where people are placed. The, the, the schedule in general isn't, isn't a bad schedule. I mean, it's not, it's not the top, it's not the worst. And, you know, but when we're looking at our non-certified, we've got some problems there.
Yeah.
But with just the teacher's schedule, you know, again, we have to look, you know, at those numbers in there. I mean, we'll have, you'll have access to all the data, but to make a recommendation that fits into our budget, and then it's up to you. You know, where, where do you want, where do you want, where do you want to go with this? But I couldn't hand these to you right now and say, choose one, because we'd be in trouble unless we, we've got to do some more refining. And, and Dave and I don't know what that refining is yet, because we just got all these categorized, categories cleaned up, so we know what all the moving pieces are. Because we don't want to present something to you that we can't afford. But you will have to.
That's the fastest way to get the taxpayer's voice heard.
What's that?
That'd be the fastest way to get the taxpayers speaking, because we, we want them to do their due diligence in looking at what we can afford within the budget that we are currently under. So if you didn't do that, I would be disappointed.
Well, I, I just want to make sure I have some answers for you when we give it to you.
Are, are you going to show us all four models, run with them?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three, three models, right? And we said four, but one was.
There's numbers with all of them right now, but we just don't know how they work yet.
So the fifty-two percent of our non-certified, that's all, are paraprofessionals, that's all. So that has been a huge issue for years, that they've been.
Yeah, well, they've had this three, they've had this three-step placement. And I didn't realize this, that when, I just, this fall, it's not a step schedule. You get placed on step one when you come in here, you're on step one forever, unless you give a two percent or something. I didn't realize that, I thought, you got on here, moved over, and no, that's not the way it is. And that's why some people get, you know, because some people come in with a lot of experience with having to put them on a third step. You know, and then you get people that have done five, ten years over here, and haven't made any progress, but, you know, so that's, those are some of the inequities. Plus, again, where people are placed on teacher's schedule, and we've talked about those, and we've got several, you know, kind of inequities there because of act ten. And, you know, we've tried to rectify that. You know, again, the, the schedule that we have right now is really a step and lane schedule, but it's just not laid out, you know, in the whole pictorial view of it. And, you know, you're not going down every year like, down or over, you know, with the schedule we have. It's like, okay, are you going to move, move the steps forward and what have you, you don't have that choice every year. And it hasn't been like that. So we just need to get to a regular schedule that treats people fairly. And again, there's just a price tag, and we want to make sure we have accurate numbers to give you. If we implement this, it's going to be an additional four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year.
And all I was saying was make sure when you're talking about this, that that is what you're saying, and not, we have to mess with the, the number, the data that we got from.
Yeah, the only thing you're going to have to probably do is, you know, look at, you know, look at the data, and, you know, what can you afford to do? And that's what you might have to, you know, can you afford to start at forty-nine thousand? Or, you know, I mean, right now, we're at, I think, forty-one thousand, which is one of the highest in the area to be honest. But I will tell you, that third schedule is kind of a little out there, you know, it's about a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar price tag just to implement. The step and lane one, to get everyone.
Across the board or just for teachers?
Just for teachers. You know, so there's a price tag with all these, that's what I'm saying, we need, Dave and I don't have the whole handle on it yet, but it's taking longer than we thought.
I just want to make sure that all the support staff is equally a part of the conversation, and not cast aside some of the teaching staff.
And we've got great data, we have great data, you know, from, you know, the comparables, you know, are everywhere around us. And, you know, we even, you know, we've got, I think they got Hudson Stillwater or have you, but she explained, you know, how the, you know, those aren't going to skew the system, because you take these and you take those out. And so you've got good, you could, it, it, it's good stuff.
You have to, the most, probably the most important part is getting like jobs, you know, across the district, okay?
That's what we're trying to scrub through, is trying to categorize people in the right place. That's why I'd have principals in, to say, okay, what do these people do?
Yeah.
Compared to what she's seeing the market, what they're reporting these people do. Because they had, yeah, they, they, they had a couple of people just way miscategorized.
Yeah, sure.
You know, and so.
Titles don't mean anything.
No, well, yeah, and that's what's happening now with the, you know, with the handbook they're starting to work on, and the job descriptions. Because we've got, I mean, just all got to flow together.
Yeah.
So, but we're getting there, we're getting there, it, it is, it's more than I thought, but looking at the data, you know, if any of you want to come and sit down sometime with me, I'll walk you through just the data we have. I won't let any of that information out, even with the principals, they saw it, and we had to take it back from them, because, you know, this is not stuff, you know, you want to, just yet, until it's all scrubbed clean and ready for revises.
So the long-term goal is to have.
Maybe that's a good word.
No, that's not a good word.
Well, that's what Victoria used to say, we got to keep scrubbing this till we get it right, so.
So the long-term goal is to have an implementable solution for the next school year?
Oh, yeah, I'm hoping we have this whole thing, you know, wrapped up by the end of this, by the end of the year, I mean, target was, you know, the spring, but.
I have a question along that line though, so you said it's ready for next year, but it has to be within the budget. And that's what's going to make the final decision for us, and then we have to convince the taxpayers that this is worth implementing, and with the data to back it up. So it's not something, just because we say, we think this needs to be done, it'll happen. That's a significant, I suspect, it's a significant dollar commitment to bring everybody up, even to the least expensive one.
It's going to be, it's going to be, you're, you're, you're starting out way behind.
Right.
I mean, these things have to be, these things have to be analyzed and updated, but every, every three to four years, otherwise you're, you're, you're in the dark ages. It's like trying to do the survey from three or four years ago.
And these were analyzed, but we were cramped by act ten.
Yeah.
Every school in this, in the state was. But if we had stayed with the way things were laid out, and Lori is very well aware of this too. When you compare what the count, or the state's, or our living area average household income is, at sixty-one thousand. And you compare that to a single teacher's wage, ranging from the forty-one thousand that it is now, to senior teachers that are seventy-two thousand, and that salary alone and benefits. We need to be focused on how we will sell that to the district, because when, how many are in the poverty? It's a significantly higher number. We have to be able to pay for this. So even if we believe we are underpaying, we have to have the taxpayers on board, or we will lose all credibility.
Well, I think it's, if you're looking at strictly from that perspective, I think if you're looking at it from the perspective of quality of education. You believe that education and educators and the system is an investment and not an expense. We need to educate our community on, on investing in education. And we have been, in the past, we have been, yay, we have the lowest taxes round, and we haven't invested in opportunities that we could have. So we, you know.
I don't know that we've ever celebrated that we have the lowest taxes round. And I'd be very careful in saying we have to educate our taxpayers, I think we have to give them the information.
Now, we have to educate our taxpayers into what.
We're having a discussion of, of something at this point that we don't have all the information on yet. And, and we know that we have quality salaries top and bottom, and that it's in the middle with our support staff, that we have a challenge. And we will have to be able to inform and make decisions. But it's going to require many discussions before we get there. So if it's all right, I'd like to move on to the next topic, given the weather outside. Alright, so we are at the once around the table, item eleven. So we'll start with Patty. Do you have any topics that you would like to share with Mark and I, or?
I got nothing.
Patty?
Nope.
I would like to better understand fund twenty-one. In one of Dave's last presentations, he shared that it was about a hundred thousand dollars. And so I would like to understand what, what has come in to fund twenty-one this year. Yeah, who, who it's coming in from the.
Kind of curious on a few of those.
Good call.
I was thinking about that when he was going through it.
Yeah.
I don't have anything at this time. Oh, I'm good, alright. There were questions on the data that we were provided, do we want to see an update of that with the gender and the culture activities and?
I, I guess what I was looking at, I would, you know, I mean, look at cheerleading, okay, ten cheerleaders and whatever the numbers. I would like to, I think our numbers look really good, but I think we have a lot of kids that are in four or five. I mean, it would be nice to know how many kids actually.
He did that, that's the.
It's an average, it's an average. I, I would like to see what it actually is.
Well, he's got those. Tobago one on high school students. That doesn't match what's on a DPI website.
Yeah, doesn't, they didn't have a match.
So the question was?
It's, it's like, when they, when they bring that in, when you, you know, you know how many kids are in one activity, two activities, how many are in sports? It's, this is a really good overview, but it's still not actuals. Yeah, I mean, if you're only in robotics, you're one kid in robotics, you know. I, I think our numbers look higher than what they actually are. I just, I think it's not.
More kids are not participating than the sixty-seven percent that he's.
Yes, yes, I just, it's, it's too.
That's what he said he, he did in that section.
But there's CPI, there's DPI, there's WIAA, and then there's the daytime thing and the afternoon, afternoon thing. I mean, I think it was, it's, I, I think it's great, but I just don't think it's as, it's totally actuals.
So what are you asking for then?
I, I want to know how many in, if you have, how many freshmen, if there's a hundred and eighty-six freshmen, how many freshmen are actually involved?
And let's break that down by gender.
Yes, yes.
Well, and it'd be nice to know how many are involved in one thing, how many are involved in two things, how many are involved in seven things.
Well, I think that also then helps you with your, your GPA and, and all that there. If you, you know, to get a better grasp as to what kids are involved in and which, how many are not involved. Because if our number of kids that are not involved, why are they not involved? You know, are they not involved because they can't afford it? Are they not involved because they're working? What is the reasons that they're not involved?
So some are not interested?
Well, there are some that are not interested, but we have a wide variety of some options here.
Are you looking for a survey to go off to these kids?
I think all that data is there.
Let's just take our data first.
Yeah.
Got to be. I mean, with why they're not involved.
You're going to make, you gotta do data during the decision making, you gotta have all the data.
So Katie and Bruce said I could do an opportunity for the ones around the table.
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good? Alright, so we're on item twelve, which is an action item to resume Robert's rules of order. Is there anyone who's willing to make a motion to resume Robert's? Thank you, so motion by Patty Shocker, is there a second? Second, Katie. So we have a motion made by Patty Shocker and seconded by Katie Thurvis to resume Robert's rules of order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Item number seven is an, or sorry, thirteen is an action item. We have a recommendation that the board approve the personnel update as presented. Is there anyone who's willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Patty, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Bruce. So we have a motion made by Patty Shocker and seconded by Bruce Valargen to approve the personnel update as presented. Any questions or discussion?
Are we anticipating any more retirements?
Are we anticipating, there may be one.
She is Patty.
Madame?
Oh, she's already retired.
Oh, did she?
There's somebody here.
Oh.
Do I speak out of turn? I don't know, maybe, I don't know.
Well, I'm just, is, is Mark and Madame are the only two of them?
No, no, no.
Shelling, all that check out last.
So this is not a cumulative list?
No, no, this is just the new ones that came in.
Okay. Alright, hearing no more questions, all those in favor of approving the personnel update as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And the motion passes unanimously, six to zero. The next item on our agenda is to adjourn into closed session. We have a recommendation that the school board adjourn in a closed session to consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of the district administrator. And to review administrative contracts pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight-five, section one, section C. Is there anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Catherine, is there a second?
I'll do a second one.
Thank you, Patty. So we have a motion made by Catherine Cranston and seconded by Patty Shocker to move into closed session. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of moving in, adjourning into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And the motion passes, six to zero. It is seven twenty-eight, I need to use the restroom, and we take a six-minute recess and resume in closed session at seven thirty-five.
Thank you. Would it be possible to get that spreadsheet to be a cumulative one?
I'm sure it can.
I mean, if they're on different pages or in different.
Because you're going to forget. I forgot, I forgot, I'm like. Yeah, I forgot all of it.
Two things on our agenda for the closed session tonight, Mark's contract and.